And then at that point, we'll have to elect a president of the council pursuant to the city charter. And the floor will be open for nominations.
Do we do that every time?
Just when the mayor and the vice mayor are answered.
Okay, I mean every time they're gone?
Right.
Chris Hansen?
Here.
Trace Connor? Tim Poplin?
Here.
Eddie Foreman? John Kramer?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Cory Crabtree? Dana Miller?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
So I advise the council to open the floor for nominations to elect a president of the council to conduct the meeting tonight.
I nominate Larry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have to do a roll call on that.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Uh, sorta.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So at what point do we want to do that, after or before?
There's an agenda item for that under the city council meeting.
First one, yeah. Okay. It's the first thing that we do is open up the Seminole Airport Authority. So roll call please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Here.
Trace Connor? Tim Poplin?
Here.
Eddie Foreman? John Kramer?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Cory Crabtree? Dana Miller?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Okay, a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those no? And we have a bid, a number one is bids, consideration, and possible action.
Probably need to do appearances and petitions from the audience.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Well, on the consent agenda, don't we have to do a roll call vote?
Yeah, so on the consideration and action for the consent agenda, because we're approving monetary sums being paid, let's take a roll call.
Back for the money.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
All about the money.
So a roll call please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Consent agenda?
Yes. Tim Poplin?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now you got a green light.
Appearances or petitions from the audience? Since there are no appearances or petitions from the audience, then I will move to approvals and acceptances for bids. Number one is consideration and possible action to approve soliciting requests for qualifications from engineering firms for an airport consultant.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And this is money, so we do a roll call please, Jay.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Then I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? A motion passes and adjourned, and moving to the Seminole Gas Authority. Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Cory Crabtree? Larry Church?
Here.
Dana Miller?
Here.
Trace Connor? John Kramer?
Here.
Chris Hansen?
Here.
Eddie Foreman? Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
So consideration and action of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Yes.
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Gas Authority? None noted, so entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned, we'll move to the Seminole Utilities Authority. Roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer?
Here.
Trace Connor? Chris Hansen?
Here.
Dana Miller?
Here.
Cory Crabtree? Tim Poplin?
Here.
Eddie Foreman? Larry Church?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appearances or petitions from the audience for the Seminole Utilities Authority? None noted, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. The meeting is adjourned, and we'll move to the Seminole Municipal Authority. Is this the first one for the municipal authority, is it? The second one? Okay. Consideration and action of consent.
Roll call.
Oh, excuse me, roll call please, Jay.
Cory Crabtree?
I'll get to the good stuff.
Eddie Foreman? Tim Poplin?
Here.
Dana Miller?
Here.
Larry Church?
Here.
Chris Hansen?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Trace Connor? Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Appearances or petitions from the audience? No appearances or petitions from the audience noted. Move to approvals and acceptances. Bids, number one, consideration and possible action to approve the bid of sixty-four thousand eight, uh, six hundred eighty-three dollars and zero cents from Baker Equipment Group for a high, a new high-pressure sewer cleaner parentheses, a jet rocker. A capital improvement project which is a budgeted item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please, Jay, motion's been made and seconded.
Tim Poplin?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Move to item number two. Consideration and possible action to approve soliciting requests for qualifications from refuse contractors to perform the city's trash services. The current five-year contract with WCA is due to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain the difference between an RFQ and an RFP?
I cannot, perhaps someone else can.
Yes. Brad probably's got a better handle on it, but RFQ deals with professional services. In most cases, an RFP, a proposal, comes from a contractor or subcontractor that is going to provide hands-on improvement to something. So in most cases, I can't think of an exception, the qualifications deal with architectural, sometimes engineering-type developments. In almost all those cases, the, those professions are not required to disclose upfront what their fees are going to be. So the only way of evaluating them is through their qualifications. So it's not like we get to see XYZ engineers versus QRV engineers, the twenty thousand dollars versus eighteen thousand dollars. We don't get to see a bid amount in those. So we ask for qualifications rather than a bid. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Roll call please, Jay, motion's been made and seconded.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to current business, item number three on the agenda, consideration and possible action to approve increasing the charge for water meter taps as follows. Three-fourths of an inch from two hundred and seventy-eight dollars to one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. A one-inch tap from three hundred and forty-three dollars to one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And a two-inch tap from eight hundred and seventeen dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars. Now, I was looking through earlier, I guess someone has done some research about what is appropriate, what other municipalities are charging for these taps, and can someone help me with that? City manager?
Sure.
City manager?
Sure, be glad to. I can't think of the last time that we actually increased the tap fees. Clearly, they've gotten much, much more expensive. Every time we do even a minimal tap, we're going to be losing and are losing five hundred dollars plus. So we kind of went through and did a survey of those, of our size and surroundings. For example, let's take, let's go with Opiedmont, a five-eight cents tap, which is small, is going to be two thousand fifty dollars. Their one inch is twenty-six hundred dollars, and their two inch is thirty-one hundred dollars. So we're coming in well under that, but this is, this is an increase that we think is necessary. Tecumseh, for a one-inch tap, they're already at one thousand four hundred and fifty. Their two-inch tap is at one thousand six hundred and thirty. So you can see, rather than fourteen hundred and fifty dollars Tecumseh charges, we're only charging three hundred and forty-three. And we just, we're losing money so fast, we can't continue to do that, in my opinion. That's why we're recommending the tap increase. I can go through with Ada and Weatherford and Guthrie and others, if you care to know those numbers.
Thank you. I guess, just to clarify, what we're talking about here is if you want to have a new water meter set out of residence, a new bill, a new house, building, whatever, then these are the fees that the city charges to set that meter and hook the water up.
Yes, that's, that's exactly right. Just the material cost, I can tell you, just for material on a three-quarter inch tap is about seven hundred and seventy dollars. And right now, we're charging, we're only charging two hundred and seventy-eight. So even if we just went to the material cost, we'd be doing a significant increase, so.
So just for clarification, or so people may know, about how many of these do we do a year in Seminole? A what?
You're asking for an average, I can't, I, I'm going to say probably in the neighborhood of two hundred and forty would be a rough guess.
So we're losing considerable amount of money.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion about the water taps?
So Steve, you're saying two hundred and forty, you want, is that a year? Yes, I'm going to say, well, it's probably more than that. I'm going to say probably three to five a month. Would you say that's about average? And that's for residential? Residential meter placement, so. So not like business or? It'll be in effect, and that's why, for example, a two-inch meter, you wouldn't put that at a residence, that's going to be a commercial. Commercial? Yes, yes, ma'am. And this would be for if there's like a new home being built? Yes. Okay. Exactly. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Hansen? John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes. Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Hansen? John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Since there's no further business on the agenda, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Ayes have it, meeting is adjourned. Now we'll move on to the regular meeting of the Seminole City Council. And roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Here.
Cory Crabtree? Larry Church?
Here.
Trace Connor?
Chris Hansen? Here.
Eddie Foreman? Dana Miller?
Here.
John Kramer?
Here.
Jeff Griffin. We have a quorum.
Okay, with the pledge of allegiance, stand and face the flag.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim, will you lead us in prayer?
I'd like Danny to lead us in prayer tonight, please.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight for the opportunity to know you and experience your direction in our lives. We just ask a special blessing on the city councils that makes decisions that affect so many people. We ask that our future be in line with the things that you have in order for us to do. Thank you for the men and women here tonight who are willing to serve and to help your holy name be proclaimed, amen.
Amen, thank you, Danny.
Consideration and action of consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, roll call please, Jay.
Tim Poplin?
Yes, sir.
Larry Church?
Yes.
Chris Hansen?
Yes.
Dana Miller?
Yes.
John Kramer?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Any appearances or petitions from the audience? No appearances or petitions from the audience noted, move on to presentations. The mayor's proclamation declaring the second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Seminole. And I'll read that to you at this time. Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation, whereas the city of Seminole is a diverse community, and diversity is valued by its leaders and residents, and whereas the city of Seminole recognizes that in 2019, the Oklahoma Legislature and governor passed a law designating the second Monday in October as Oklahoma Native American Day, and whereas the city of Seminole has a relatively high indigenous population, and recognizes that indigenous people have made many positive contributions to our present-day city, state, and nation, and whereas there are thirty-nine sovereign tribal governments located in Oklahoma, and the Seminole Nation of Oklahoma is located in Seminole County. Does that mean?
It's a lack of fiber on it.
It's raining.
Okay. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in nineteen seventy-seven by decoration, by delegation of native nations to the United Nations-sponsored International Conference on Discrimination Against Indigenous Populations in the Americas, and whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day allows for all people to honor their origins and ancestors who overcame challenges, so that one day their descendants might reap the reward of living equally and peacefully with one another and with the earth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Seminole proclamation or proclaim the second Monday in October shall be recognized and celebrated as Indigenous Peoples' Day with intentional community gatherings to learn more about the cultures, contributions, and values of indigenous peoples, and be it further resolved that the city of Seminole encourage its residents to be in solidarity with indigenous peoples across the city of Seminole, state of Oklahoma, and the United States of America, and this is signed by the mayor of the city of Seminole, Jeff Griffin. Now we'll move on to bids. Item number one, consideration and possible action to approve soliciting bids to equip the new twenty twenty-two Chevrolet Tahoe for the police department.
Mr. Chairman, I probably should have spoken up earlier, I'm Jack Mattingly, SEDC. I was asked to appear here this evening and give a status report, and I went to sleep at the switch here when we got to the item said appearances from the audience. I don't know if that's where I fit or not. If I do, I'm glad to give that report, it's your pleasure.
That would be our pleasure for you to do that at this time, Mr. Mattingly.
Great chance to opportunity to be here and give you a status report of Seminole Economic Development Council. Most of what I'm going to say, you already know, but I'll say it anyhow. And feel free to stop me if I say too much. You probably realize that our Seminole Economic Development Council, we call it SEDC, really started in nineteen ninety-seven as a successor to the Seminole Industrial Development Authority. I'm not sure why that change was made. I, I wasn't that involved at that time, I think it was to give a broader base for our board. Our board is now consisted of nine members, two come from Seminole Industrial Foundation, that is not to be confused with the old Seminole Industrial Development Authority, which is our predecessor, and it's now defunct. We get two members from the chamber board, we get two from this council, we get the mayor, and we elect two at-large members of our own. What do we do, or what have we done? Enviro? We were instrumental in keeping Enviro here. That was a long, complex effort led by our executive director, your city manager, but we were able to keep them here. Part of that effort was led by some of our individual members not under the flag of SEDC, but their own efforts to appease Enviro for the needs that they needed in the form of education here. Some of you may remember that, it was a little dicey. But we prevailed, and some of the SEDC board members involved themselves in that, and I think that was successful because Enviro is still here. And I live across the highway from it, and every morning when I go to work, I'm amazed that that parking lot is full, and it's full of high-salaried employees that bring a lot to this community. Blue wave boats, but for SEDC and Steve's prodding us, there would be no blue wave boats in Seminole. That was another long-term effort to finance and get that done, but it's here. Another one that I think supersedes those in time and complexity and intricacy was getting Sigma here from Mexico. It's now called Bar S. Also navigating through the tax increment finance district out there, that took a barn full of lawyers, and I think we killed a couple forests of trees, all the paperwork to comply with that TIF and to get them here. I would also, I'm going down a list here, RW Lyle, we brought them here, they were in our incubator for a while. We were instrumental in brokering the deal with the hotel, and we're not giving up. We need another hotel, we not only need another hotel, we need another hotel badly. That is a task, and Steve is working on that on an ongoing basis. It's a sensitive subject, and he calls on SEDC or some of our individual members from time to time. But we've learned, you've got to be very careful when you recruit industry. First of all, they don't want you to know that you're recruiting them or that they're looking at you, because they have competitors. And Steve takes an oath of silence with them when he first meets them. It was a while before I figured this out, and some of you may not know it. And when they contact Steve, they ask of him to not tell his board, and he very well right now is negotiating with some industry. I'm chairman of SEDC, and I don't know about it, because they don't want me to know. They don't want any of the board members to know, they don't want their competitors to know that they're thinking of branching out. When it gets down to the point that the assets of the public or our public trust may go to get them or to be jeopardized, then Steve brings it to the board, and we take over from there. So that's an ongoing process in recruiting these, and if Steve from time to time has seen tight-lipped with you, that's why, he's sworn to secrecy, or they won't even consider us. We participated in grants for the fire station, police station, our incubator. We're pretty proud of our buildings, the old Wrangler buildings on Harvey Road. Those come in handy when a local industry or another industry needs a temporary placement, and we're always dealing on that. And it seems like we have too many leaky rusts, too many other landlord-tenant problems, but that's just one of the things that SEDC deals with and plans for. New high school. We committed and furnished several hundred thousand dollars to lay a water line to the new high school. SEDC members got personally involved in that, and the chemistry for that to happen comes in our board meetings, especially executive sessions, things that we don't think the public dollar ought to be subject to, or spent for, or using the time of public employees. So individual members of SEDC involved themselves, and the genesis of that comes from discussion among ourselves because of our meetings. We were instrumental in brokering winding street apartments, the townhouses next to the wellness center. We've just finished finally the work there, and I refer to that, it was a marathon, not a sprint. The forests that weren't killed by the TIF district were killed by- The forests that weren't killed by the TIF district were killed by the bank lawyers that required so much paperwork, and there are times we didn't think we could comply with them, but we did, and we're so thankful for that bank in Oklahoma City that stood up and furnished us what we needed in the way of housing. Everybody here knows it's critical in Seminole. Housing is critical in Seminole, and we're still working on it. We work on it continually. We were instrumental in the acquisition of the 300 acres across from the new high school. We've been asked to help package a deal for that owner and maybe broker a deal for him. We've always been involved in that and will continue to be involved in that until that 300 acres is devoted to housing, which we so badly need, and especially being across from the new high school would be real nice. Hardened Landing, we just finished a $60,000 loan to remodel that. That was the speed bump to keep that from being fully developed, but for SEDC, the completion of hardened landing to satisfy either a purchaser or a tenant wouldn't be happening, and I'm glad to see that's underway. We brokered a deal on the Aeropump Building by Don Ceros. Seminole Urban Renewal Authority has that, and we're looking forward to that being developed to help our downtown. Our sales tax projects, we're always involved in that. We do ascend when Steve needs help. He'll ask us. If SEDC doesn't do it as an entity, as members, we try to jump in. And this upcoming election on our new sewer system, you will see some of our SEDC members intricately involved in that. And SEDC, I'm sure, will do an endorsement. We're looking for other endorsements from civic clubs and other organizations. That's so important. We've got to educate the public on the needs for that new sewer system. Fire layoffs, volunteers. We went through that period and SEDC helped the city on that as we could, and we came out better than we were when it started. The Old Walmart Store, it was a big lift for Seminole when Buford White moved to the Old Walmart Store, and SEDC again was intricately involved in that. Wrangler lease and space and grants. I've already mentioned that, Wrangler buildings, we're involved in that, keeping those rented. Our industrial park, that's really our pride and joy. That's where Sigma, now known as Bar S, is located. We have another business that started up there. I say started, they moved in their building materials. They've got some budget problems, and they don't know if they're going to finish it or not, but there's ongoing negotiations between SEDC, Steve Saxon, the business that's already got some of their building materials there, and another business to absorb them, and that is a merry-go-round that continues on and on, but it will come to fruition, and SEDC will stay hooked to do what it can there. One of the biggest, most important efforts, I think, was saving of the Seminole producer. That was a game of seconds. Brad Carter is well aware of that. He was on the front lines of that, and this community came very close to losing the Seminole producer. You have a Seminole producer because SEDC bought it and paid the money. I'm going to be quick to add, we don't want to be in the newspaper business either. It's a pain. We have no business messing with it, but we're in it, and fortunately, we've got a man down there that is holding it together and running it. But that's another, just another item that needs attention from time to time from SEDC. I'm bad about doing all the talking, so I'm going to shut up and open it up. Any suggestions, comments, questions while I'm here? I'll do my best. If I can't handle it, somebody in the room hopefully can. As you know, the mayor serves on our board, and we've got a councilman. Steve, which councilman do we have now?
Chris.
Chris is, and Trace, I believe.
Yeah, Trace and Chris, okay. We've never missed a forum, I mean a quorum. We always have a quorum, and I'm kind of proud of my fellow members that they always show up. So we don't drag our feet. We meet monthly, last Monday of each month, 4:00 PM usually. We meet at the rental center, and when we have to do something to accommodate a recruiting industry or some other local need, we do a lot of special meetings anytime during the day when we need them. Again, I was doing all the talking. Any comments or suggestions? We don't have all the ideas, and we're open for any help or thoughts that you might share with us.
Are your meetings open to the public?
Yes, yes, they are, and we do have a executive session agenda because once Steve brings these industries to us, we have to keep it quiet to keep their interest and keep them here. So we do that in executive session.
Mr. Mattingly, you said there were two from the members from the chamber and two members at large?
Yes, ma'am.
I looked on your website just now, which is, I really like the title of it. It's locateinseminal.org.
Okay.
That's pretty cool, but I'm not seeing, I've tried to figure out a spot on here where it showed who the members are, and I didn't see it.
Oh, the names of the members?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm chairman, I'm one of the at-large members.
Okay.
Bob Griggs was just appointed as another at-large member. Neil Craig, he came from, where did he emanate from? Steve?
He's a chamber appointee.
Chamber. Trace Connor came from your committee. Dr. McRite, I believe he came from SIF or is he chamber?
SIF.
SIF. Help me, Sharon, who am I?
Oh, Mike Roberts and...
Yes, Mike Roberts.
He's chamber, and I'm sorry, I believe...
Zach.
Zach Northrup is the SIF appointee, one of them, and Mike McRite is an SIF employee.
Okay. And Chris. And Chris, our other council appointee. But should, total nine.
You also mentioned, Mr. Mattingly, the, you know, the SEDC went in and saved the Seminole producer.
Yeah.
Which I'm really thankful for that. There's other businesses that I see throughout town who, you know, I just drove by, Hurry Harden Furniture, and it's going out of business. How does SEDC decide which businesses to kind of go in and save and which ones to let go?
Jobs, jobs, jobs.
Okay.
Now, the producer didn't fit that scheme as much, but we are very fortunate, a community this size having a five-day-a-week newspaper that's not just a shopper or shopper guide. It's almost unheard of. And I think the producer is the oldest privately-owned daily in Oklahoma now.
Really?
Yeah, you go, I go back to Mel Phillips when he had it, then his son Ted Phillips when he had it, and Stu Phillips when he had it, and now, fortunate or unfortunate, SEDC, that's not our preference. We don't like that, but we were thrust into it, and we've kept alive, and we will keep it alive. Someday that will hopefully work into a better situation. I'm proud of it that it's still going, and Mike Gifford is swinging away down there. We didn't lose a step, really. He stepped in when Sherry Carter, she performed yeoman service for a year or more down there for free and kept us afloat. Then Mike jumped in and took it from there, so we're just thankful we have it.
I might add, I don't think I'm revealing anything from executive session, but the discussion, you can tell most of the members are business people and citizens of Seminole, and their main concern with the Seminole producer was losing the only watchdog of public funds that was out there, and they wanted to ensure that somebody was watching what was happening, and we just saw what can happen when nobody's really paying attention with the countywide election that cut our fire department $86,000. If nobody's calling attention to that and all you're doing is having a weekly shopper newspaper, then you're at risk, and I think they were advanced in thinking, we can't have that. We need someone watching the hen house.
We've been spoiled for decades because of Stu Phillips. We knew he was spoiling us, we just paying attention to it. When he passed on, we really knew that he'd spoil us. Nothing got past Stu, and he really helped us watchdog this community.
And then just one last question. I know that, just in the name of the Economic Development Council, and especially given your website, locate2seminal, it seems like the overall goal is to recruit business to the city. Is there any, do you have any efforts to retain businesses?
Yes, ongoing.
Ongoing.
Hi, this is just me. It's not Steve saying it. It's not the board saying it. We're babysitters. We're babysitters. And I'm hesitant to tell you all the requests made of us, but we get requests made, please help us with this, please help us with that, and we do the very best we can, and we almost always do it. I could preach a sermon on Enviro and why they're still here because they came, their existing business, they came to us. We got to do something about our education, or we're leaving. Period, paragraph. And they had offers a lot better than Seminole. Now, fortunately or unfortunately, Seminole Economic Development Council can do just so, if it helps us economically, we'll delve into it. But our schools right now, our State Department of Education gives a report card to every school in Oklahoma every year, except maybe during COVID. What do you think our Seminole school last five report cards have been, Seminole schools?
Ds. Oh.
Ds and deltas. What are you going to do about it? Is that an economic matter? We think it is, but what can we do? I went to the school board and begged them with tears in my eyes. Here's a man, well, me, no, here's an organization backed by a man, give you a blank check because they're in the middle of hiring new leadership. Search the world for the best you can get. This will pay for it. No, thank you. That request actually made a year before I did. Year went by, I thought, well, let's make it again. Maybe they forgot about it. The school board again, two blank checks. One, to search for the best leadership you can get, conduct a nationwide search. The second one is to supplement his salary to keep him here. Who ever heard of such a thing? We were turned down again, but we're still getting Ds on our report cards. That hurts. Now, these people that Steve deals with, these industrial people are smart. Their management make the decisions where they go. A lot of them are middle management. They've got kids. They know how to research on the internet. But we wow them with rental center, we wow them with golf course, we wow them with college, we wow them with a lot of things, our fire department, our police department, they have beautiful facilities. They used to be scared away because of the old high school, so we went to work on that. Now they're easy scared away with, I want to put my kid in the D scoop. What are you going to do about it? What's SEDC going to do about it? We're kind of afraid to address that. Our foundation, our Seminole Educational Foundation, I'm not a member of it, but I have friends that are, and they are trying to make some improvements to improve our students' performance to get us up from the D level. That's really not their job, but they're having to do it, it looks like. And I hear they're making some progress, and they've brought in an expert or two to advise. Maybe we'll see some help there, but if I brought home all Ds, I got, if our football team performed at a D level, but our schools are performing at a D level, so what are we going to do about it? We're losing industry every day, and we're hurting those students every day. There's a lot of collateral damage from that. So that's my sermon there. And SEDC, it's frustrating to us, it affects our economy, but we can't manage the school. And with Steve as active as he is, if you folks have any suggestions or comments or anything, call me or any member of the board. I'm a sitting target. I've got an office downtown, a published phone. Call me if Steve's out of pocket. We do not have a monopoly on ideas, but we know where our weak spots are and where our strong spots are. Weaknesses, housing, education, strong industry. We're furnishing a lot of residents for Shawnee, Ada, and around, and they come in here, they drive in here because of the industrial recruitment that we've been able to do, in great part because of Steve's leadership. I've been, I used to be city attorney, and I watched a lot of city managers come and go, a lot of city councils and mayors come and go, and we've never had the momentum and the success that we have now in those areas, all areas except education and housing, and there's a story on both of them, if you ever want to hear it. We'll have lunch sometime. Again, thank you, and call us anytime you've got a good idea or you want to just sit down and talk about it because we need all the help we can get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mattingly.
You're welcome.
For those who don't know, Seminole has a rich history in education. A little town, our high school at one time, and I'm not from here, but our high school at one time was a kind of like a prep school, and we've produced, Seminole's produced two Rhodes Scholars over there. I'd like to see us get back there someday. Okay, where were we? We were at bids and item number one. Consideration and possible action to approve soliciting bids to equip the new 2022 Chevrolet Tahoe for the Police Department.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving to number two. Consideration and possible action to approve declaring the following equipment as surplus and soliciting sealed bids for their disposal. We have a Mini Roller Model 4K 3036. We have a Farm Tractor Model FT-60, a 1998 Dodge Ram 3500, a 1995 Dodge... A nineteen ninety-five Dodge Ram 3500. A nineteen seventy-five Grado. A Heston tractor and a Case tractor.
Another question, are these just, none of them work anymore? Are, is that why we're getting rid of them?
Right, they're no longer, certainly, e- even if they're starting, they're no longer contributing to anything that we're able to do with them. So, we surplus them and get what we can out of them. Almost always, we've worn them to the bone and not, not much left on them.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, Jay. Will you, roll call, please?
Tim Poplin.
Yes, sir.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we move on to resolutions. Item number three on the agenda, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution Number 2021 dash seventeen, a resolution for the purpose of electing officers. And I don't know anything to contribute to that. Can you help us with, explain what that is?
It's, it's that time of year when it's time for us to put our names in the hat and go to vote at the polls for new city council members.
Move to approve.
Second.
Don't need a roll call for this one, so it's, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Ayes have it. Move to item number four under current business. Consideration and possible action to approve transferring twenty-five thousand dollars to the Seminole Urban Renewal Authority for the acquisition of property located at ten thirty-one Born Boulevard, otherwise known as USA Tank. What, what are we gonna do with that property and so forth?
Okay, so there's a mutual agreement between the Urban Renewal Authority and the Seminole Economic Development Council that Jack represents. They, the plan is to demolish and clean it up and get rid of the rusty buildings there at the corner, at the roundabout, and to make it available for commercial and, and probably multifamily units is, is the plan. So, right there, right now, it's zoned industrial, that'll take some work. You'll probably hear us come back to you at some point if we get commercial interest for a rezone, but it's got a lot of potential and possibly, we're not gonna make any decisions, but possibly be the host of your new family entertainment center. So, it's got, I wanna say near fourteen acres, does that sound right? Give or take a little bit, fourteen acres there. It's not just the two buildings, it goes way up toward Blue Wake Boat. So, that's been an eyesore for a long, long time, and we are so close to, to getting that. We just, just right there.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Did, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, that, I'm just gonna ask, that's both buildings on each side of Strathers and then plus the acreage?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
That's all I had.
Go ahead.
Okay. Motion is made and seconded. Uh, this is Bob's bunny, so we'll need a roll call vote, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes, sir.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number five. Consideration and possible action to approve the annual lease agreement with the Seminole Lions Club for a portion of Magnolia Park during the Snowman Wonderland Festival. Is there any way that we could talk them down on that?
A dollar?
The one dollar lease. This is a recurring thing, as I understand it.
Yes.
Second.
Is motion, was motion made? Who made the motion?
Tim.
Tim, okay. Motion's made and seconded, and since it involves money, roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number six. Consideration and possible action to approve Accepting American Recovery Plan Act, that's the ARPA, funds of one million, two hundred, twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars and ten cents, with half or six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-four point oh five, scheduled for twenty-twenty-one, and the balance to be received in twenty-twenty-two. This is federal money we're getting.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so roll call.
Oh, sad question.
Uh, discussion.
Do what? So, Steve, remind me, did we already allocate this money in the budget?
We have had significant discussions, but it, it remains unallocated. But we've got pretty good ideas on, obviously, we're gonna be spending a twenty million dollars on a sewer plant at some point. We, we're kinda holding any real allocation of it, but right now, we just need to accept it. This is not the allocation of it. If, if the vote passes on November ninth, then we'll be able to tell what we can do. If we need this money to go to the sewer plant, then we'll, we'll approach it at that time. Things like that, there are many things. I'm not inviting input from our staff right now, because they got a lot on their wish list, but we did, yes. The city council in our work sessions had a lot of discussion about where we were going to spend the money. I should note that the money that's coming in this ARPA fund is, is strictly tied to sewer, water, or broadband.
And who will be deciding how that money is spent?
The city council. Yes, sir.
Did we already motion for that? Motion's approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please, Jay.
Tim Poplin.
Yes.
Larry Church.
Yes.
Chris Anson.
Yes.
Dana Miller.
Yes.
John Kramer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number seven. Consideration and possible action regarding fiber optics in Seminole and improving broadband through a cooperative agreement with Dobson Fiber.
Yes, we've had so many discussions about bandwidth and the condition of our access to bandwidth, especially for our students. We've been investigating, you're probably aware that we've done our own study through the M R L firm. And I got a call from Danny Williams, says, you need to visit with Dobson. And so, I, I did. I've met Jim Horsberg, who's here with us tonight, and I've asked him if he could come and kinda walk us through a little bit of what he was talking to me about. The, the thirty thousand foot snapshot that I, I really wanted to share with you is, the staff is, we, we talked a lot at the city council level about, what about if, if we just make fiber optics a city utility, right? And so, the staff and I kinda visited about this over the last few weeks, and we've come to the realization that running fiber optics within your community is not a fast solution. We're, we're talking about visiting with Tuttle and, and Salasaw and Ponca City and others that have done this. You're talking about approximately six years to roll it out until your entire community serves. So, a- as I began to evaluate the threats of new technologies coming onboard, like Elon Musk and, and satellites, et cetera, I began to be a little more open-minded to having someone like a Dobson come in and, and share with us what their options are. So, as I visited with Jim, and he's gonna get into this, I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but they've already got significant access within Seminole that would speed the delivery to our people, and that's kinda where I wanna start. Jim, if you don't mind, come up and, and tell our city council a little bit about Dobson and what's available to us.
Thank you, Steve. Again, my name is Jim Horsberg, I'm the Chief Strategy Officer for Dobson Fiber. For those of you that don't know Dobson, Dobson's been around since the nineteen thirties. It's a third generation, family-owned company, solely focused on telecom. And my job is basically to spend, I spend a lot of time traveling around the state, talking to city, city leadership about the needs and wants of the city. We have roughly forty-nine hundred miles of fiber in operation today. We cover the vast majority of Oklahoma, more than harsh portions of Texas and western Arkansas. And we're in the process of interviewing cities to, that we feel are underserved from a broadening standpoint, trying to figure out where, where should we invest our money? And so, we've had great conversations with numerous cities around the state. We've made recent announcements in areas like Enid, Wadon, Borica, Otoka, and worked well with the city. You know, we, we view ourselves as, you know, a little bit of a magnet factor to help woo in new businesses into towns. And we've had great conversations thus far with Steve. We'd love to partner with the city and hopefully improve the quality of life, not just for the residents, but businesses also within the community. And so, we've got a design that's underway that would pass by thirty-seven hundred structures within the city. So, it's not just the downtown proper area, it's for the vast majority of Seminole. And we hope to have that design effort completed within the next few weeks, and we'll have a good idea of what it'll cost. And then it's just a math problem, and trying to figure out how to make that work and make sure that there would be a return for that invested dollar. But it's a, it's a substantial project, substantial amount of money will be involved. We're willing to help, but we're excited about the partnership. We, we only wanna be in towns that want us, and thus far, it, it checks all the boxes. Steve's done a great job of laying out the needs of lots of the city, and we'd like to help with the towns around the future. And very appreciative for, and representing Williams for making the introduction. But, you know, just, just a little bit about our offering. So, you know, we, we feel like we have a pretty affordable platform. So, the vast majority of the investment's on the front end. Our services, we offer a hundred meg plan for fifty-five dollars a month, a one gig plan for eighty-five dollars a month for the residents. For the businesses, it's a little bit more expensive, but we feel like it's a pretty affordable product. Based on the fiber technology, you don't have to apologize about the service. You know, we do it right on the front end. We would actually engineer thirty-seven hundred hot ports available for the thirty-seven hundred drops on the front end. So, it takes a little bit more money and a little more time on the front end, but it makes for a much speedier deployment on the backend as we get service.
Are those speeds you're talking about, are the, is that upload and download?
Yes. So, with fiber, there's no reason to choke it up. A few years ago, no one cared about upload, everybody cared about download, but now that people have cameras and DVRs and they wanna access things remotely, yep, speed is much more relevant today than it ever was.
Well, storing on the cloud and working from home and.
Right.
It, it's increased, yes.
And we're the only provider in Oklahoma that has dual routes down to Dallas for those that want to have a virtual private connection into AWS or Azure and take advantage of virtual data centers. So, that's part of our core offering, a little bit of a differentiator between us and others. Stephen asked good questions about our support mechanism, you know, that, that's a hot button, not just the service, but the support side of it. You know, we've got a locally-run call center in Oklahoma City. We actually have a technician that is based out of Seminole. We've got a construction and outside plant crew based out of New Orleans. We have a fairly prominent contractor based out of Sulphur, another one out of Oklahoma City, and a lot of technical and engineering resources out of Oklahoma City. So, even though we're not based out of Seminole, we, we've got resources in the area.
Another question, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Third Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What we're voting on tonight is not whether we accept this, is we're gonna look into it, is that correct? We're gonna say yes, and then we'll look into it and then bring the numbers back? Right, we're, we're not quite to the part where you have to vote. Right now, this is just an exploratory thing. I do have some sample agreements with other communities, we're kinda going through that. Brad's already given me a, a rough draft of something that might be acceptable that we would bring back to the council for approval. Right now, I just wanted to, for you guys to be able to talk to him about things like, how much of this is gonna be overhead? How much is gonna be buried? How, you know, the speeds, the cost? You know, wh- why is this different than other, than copper or any other delivery system? So, those are the things that I was hoping that you guys would wanna get into with him. He's, he's the guy. He's the one that can answer all that reliability, you know, those are things that your, your citizens are gonna ask you about as, you know, how long will it take? If I'm, if I'm in the middle of a Thunder championship game and, and something gets cut, how long's it gonna take to be repaired? So, those are the things that I, I think I was really hoping that you guys would delve into with Jim, and then next time, I'll bring in an agreement back that looks like something that I would recommend.
I, I do have one question. He, Steve hit on it. If, if the deal is okayed and say, okay, go do it, how long is it before ever residents inside the city limits has access to what you're offering? And I know that's a broad question.
Yeah, it, it's hard, you know, and I, I hate to have caveats. I'd love to give you a, a number of days, but typically, seven, eight months from go. From whenever.
Not six years.
No. So, we, you know, seven, eight months is, is a good estimate for when we say go.
Is it all, is it all wired?
It'll all be fiber, hundred percent fiber. And we're, we're pretty honest, we would put as much of it in the air as we can. Some people don't like that, that they don't want another wire to look at in the air, but last we checked, we haven't been hit by a backhoe for aerial cable. So, we, there's pros and cons. You know, you have to worry about ice every once in a while, but you have to worry about backhoes a lot more than you have to worry about ice. So, we're, we're pretty blunt and honest. Now, we will put as much cable in the air as we can, just from the cost of it. To bury it is multiples more expensive.
Can you use the fiber optics that's already there by another company, or is that all gonna be scrapped?
It'll, it'll be one hundred percent Dobson fiber. We don't share a lot.
All that'll be taken down?
Oh, no, sorry. So, I believe Sunlink, AT&amp;T, and maybe a little bit of IVE, we won't touch their facilities. Whatever they have, we will not touch, it'll hundred percent be our fiber. We already have some fiber infrastructure within the town. It's not set up for distribution to thirty-seven hundred potential customers, but.
You have the okay to run them on the existing poles, or you have to set your own?
We will not set poles. We are not in the pole business. And to procure a pole today is a six-monthly time because of the hurricanes down in the Gulf. But we will go on existing electric poles where we can, and where we can't, we will bury it in condo.
That's all the questions I had, thank you.
Could you talk a little bit more about the, the presence that you have and who you're already serving in Seminole, or your facilities are serving is probably a better way to.
We are a strong partner for OneNet Okan. We partner with them, and I, I can speak to that. We maintain the OneNet Okan network throughout the state. In terms of specific customers, from a CP9 compliance standpoint, I really can't say those names, I'm not allowed to. Now, if you looked at our fiber map and you looked at where the red lines go and where they end, you can make your own determinations, but I'm, I'm truly not a liberty to discuss our customer base.
But if they're on OneNet.
Yes.
You're, you're serving them, right?
Yes, and, and we work well with OneNet. We, we partner on several different build initiatives, and we talk to them on a weekly basis. They do a lot of good for schools and libraries around the state, and we do our best to support them however we can.
So, can you tap into those lines that are already here, or you?
We, we, wherever OneNet or Okan has fiber in Seminole, we do too. We do joint builds, and sometimes we'll, we'll subsidize the builds and.
Cause if that goes where I think it goes, that's a pretty good swath to get all those places already.
But that, that cable wasn't meant for distribution, so that's good mainline, call it midamile. So, that will be. So that will be helpful, but it really will take a much, it'll probably take a 432 count cable in most of these areas to do the after drops. But we, we have a fiber indexing scheme to where we, we truly do engineer it to every structure and every vacant block that's out there. One thing that I, just to make sure, we are not in the video business. You know, if people want to access Netflix, Hulu and the like, that's fine. But we are not in the linear video business. We're, we're pretty blunt and honest about that.
They can get it through your...
Yeah, they can get it from any, any number of sources. You can get it in a district or also satellite options. But Netflix, Hulu, I'm on Hulu Live and...
So you start your own?
The day that we start a video business is the day I quit. And I've been with Dobson about 26 years, so I, I'm held in terms of video. It's just a high maintenance nightmare. It's a trouble ticketing machine. So we just don't want to be in that business.
I'm sorry if I missed it, but you guys, are you an Oklahoma company?
Yes, based out of Oklahoma City. Everett Dobson is our chairman. That's how most people know us.
Is it public traded?
No, no. Dobson Communications was a publicly traded wireless company that sold to AT&amp;T back in 2007. And sometimes those...
Yeah, that, okay, I'm with you.
Used to have a wireless company, the Meredith SL1. That, that was a good buy to be back in 2007.
So Jim, I'm asking this for the benefit of the viewing audience. The, can you kind of explain the, the improvement through time of how we got to fiber? And how much better is it than, than cable or, or copper wire versus even before that?
Boy, I wish I had someone else to talk about. But the copper infrastructure, we, we actually have a cloud telephone company in DeWalla, McCloud. We still have a little bit of copper infrastructure out there. And it's just a archaic medium. It just is not able to produce the speeds that fiber can. There is no medium that can produce the speeds that fiber can. And it basically has endless capacity. We actually just launched last month a 10 gig fiber home plan. I'm not sure what somebody would do with 10 gig to their home, and I'm not sure it'd be legal. But if they wanted, we're more than happy to offer it. But just the capabilities that fiber has available, it's tremendous. You know, we, we've got four strands between Tulsa and Oklahoma City. And we've got 4000 deep channels running from those four strands. It's just, it's amazing how much capacity fiber can produce. But coax has, it's, it's better than copper. So what the cable companies buy, Sunlink and the like typically use, is a better medium than copper. But it still has physical limitations, but it will never be able to produce the speeds that fiber can. Yeah, that's about as technical as I can get.
Okay, I'm going to make you get even more basic, all right? So last Saturday, I'm watching the OU-Texas game on my copper wire provided to me. And I get the spiral of death because I'm on YouTube TV. And is that going to happen in, in a fiber situation? Is that what you talk about? When you say speed, is that because I don't have enough speed being provided to me?
Typically, you use the term bandwidth. Typically, you don't have enough bandwidth going to your home. And, you know, our, our lowest end plan is a 100 meg. And we sell, we're, it's, it's called an up to or a shared internet product, which means it's not a dedicated 100 meg to your house. It is shared at different components within the network. But when you hear of a 100 meg plan for a cable operator, they say it's a 100 meg plan to do a speed test, you might see 10 meg, 20 meg down. It's a different, it's a different medium. We don't need to do that. Now, I'm not going to promise that when you do a speed test, you're going to see 100 meg, but you probably won't see south of 90. Or if you're on a one gig plan, you probably won't see south of 900 meg. And if, if there is an issue, then we'll go out and mediate it. It's just, it's just a far superior technology. And it's no disrespect to AT&amp;T, Sunlink and our competitors, it's just, it's just our superior product.
Well, and I can, I can tell you that your one, if your one gig you say is 85, that's, that's less than the one gig offered by the cable company. And you don't get near one gig on the upload, it's like 50, 50 mags.
And it's just an oversubscription model that they run that is not our... Everybody has their own algorithms on how they like run their business. The cost of our internet content is not a concern for us. That's why we have dual routes into Dallas and that's where we have our internet drains. That's really not a problem for our business at all.
More people that tap into it, will it slow it down like copper?
A smidge, but if, we won't let it get to where it is. If we say 100 meg, we want to feel good about that 100 meg. That's why you probably won't see below 90. And if you're seeing below 90, then we need to do something to fix that. But any choke points in the network side, we can remediate with keystrokes. So that's a trillion dollar issue. But what, that's what happens on our network. And once we get to an internet drain, how many people are hitting the CNN or Fox News website at any given time? That can slow the responsiveness of the connection. But as far as what any telecom operator can control, we feel good about it.
Yeah, that's not your deal if everybody's hitting one area.
But we'll also have the higher-end dedicated plans, which are different, more expensive to cater to the more prominent businesses or businesses that are focused on, I can't be down. Whether it's a RS or a prominent provider like that. Those are a little bit more expensive. They come with SLAs. If, if a power does go down, if they do experience loss, there's a penalty on us as a result.
How soon will you have your plan together? And how soon do you need our agreement before you proceed?
I think the last date I heard was November 12th is when I was supposed to have the bid package back to have a true good cost estimate for the 3,700 pass. They're in the polygon we shared. And we bumped that up to include the industrial park area after our conversation.
Oh, good, thank you.
So that'll, that'll be part of it. November 12th is good.
Mr. Forsberg, I have a question. So the current broadband providers that we have, you mentioned like Sunlink, VIVE, AT&amp;T. Those all run off of the copper, is that...
AT&amp;T does have, I think, selective fiber in the town, but it's only to a few different businesses. So it's not pervasive throughout the market. And you probably have a better feel for what Seminole is not. But they have, you know, just like today, if you look at our fiber map, we do have fiber in the town. It's represented in the red line. And they're very similar where they went to, call it, some more prominent businesses and did a dedicated fiber line to those businesses, but not to every business or not to every resident. The rest of those residents and businesses are living off of copper.
Yeah.
So you already are, you already do have a presence in town? So that's your the red line?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's a place to be. And we will leverage it as further troll output. It does not have the fiber capacity that would be necessary to serve up to, there'll be some other connections, so...
And just to make sure I understand this, so the, the fiber optics is kind of the, the superior level considering the, the copper wire? So like, I think as far as speeds and reliability and everything else?
It just, you know, there's no better medium than passing light. It's basically the speed of light.
Consistency too, consistency.
Yes.
And you mentioned that, did you say you had a crew in Seminole?
We have one technician that lives in south Seminole. And we have kind of a, a switch in a network operations center in DeWalla, where several people are homed out of. And then we have engineering technician crews out of Oklahoma City. That's where our headquarters is. And we have roughly 100 people in that building. But we also have a contractor down in Sulphur, a construction contractor that we use for cottages and things like that, and another one based out of Oklahoma City.
So there would be a bigger crew in Seminole? Would that be part of your, your proposal?
Not necessarily. You know, we don't, we don't have people just sitting at a knock waiting for something to break. I mean, they're out doing projects and jobs. And if, if there is trouble, then we roll the closest resources that are available.
Dispatch them to what needs to be.
Correct. So, so they're not, they're not just waiting by the backhoe, waiting for something to break.
The bad signal. And then, I'm sorry, just one last question. You had mentioned in the beginning that you look for underserved cities to invest in?
Yes.
So is Seminole is an underserved city?
In our opinion, it is.
What is it underserved, just because the lack of broadband providers?
Yes. So in terms of pervasive providers, AT&amp;T, I'd say 90, 95%. Based on our information, 90, 95% of the businesses and residents are served off of copper, which is just by definition, just a much inferior technology. It's not, not their fault. It's just, it was the technology of the day 30 years ago when they put it underground. And the same with coax for Sunlink and VIVE. It's just an inferior medium. And it just can't produce the speeds or the consistency that fiber can.
Thank you.
Technology.
So if, I mean, if, if we get 3,700 residents signed up on this, which, you know, but it takes some time getting that media there. What, if, if their service goes down for some reason, what would be like the lead time for getting a technician out to take care of them?
I'd hate to, I mean, it depends on what it is. If it's a backhoe that finds a buried component of our network, it would be within the hour. And I'd hate to say it's going to be within 30 minutes. But it just depends on what the trouble is.
I'm just going by what currently after our cable company sold here and they got rid of all their local employees, we're talking like a week sometime.
Days, yes.
No, no. If we're measured on days, you need to kick us out of town. I mean, that, it, we're talking, you know, hopefully within the hour, resources will be on site. Because one, one thing that's a little bit different from us than other competitors, you know, we have a core backbone network that's serving 400 cell sites around the state. We have very highly opinioned, high maintenance customers that can't allow for that network to ever go down. We serve a lot of cellular towers and those sites can't go down. And if they do go down, the meter's running on us. We have financial penalties that are fairly punitive. So that's the network that we are branching off of to do this fiber in the home effort in communities like Seminole. And so by definition, those, those communities benefit from that backbone. But I don't want to say it never goes down, but it can't go down for very long because it's very, very expensive for us when that happens.
And if they're not, you know, if you don't have problems there and you have problems over here, then all these people come and take care of the problem. It's just, it's a network that everybody supports each other.
Right. I mean, we, we've got highly trained, you know, sometimes we have very extensive folks. When I go to Oklahoma City, they're going to kind of fix it. It just depends on who's available and who, who can roll that can fix the problem at the bottom. But we just, we just can't have dedicated folks just waiting around for something to break. It's, they, we need to keep them busy. They need to be here probably within the hour after a trouble's identified.
Everything you said has blown away the competition we have here right now, so...
Well, we, we, you know, there, there's the, the product that we roll out, but we also feel like our service is a little different. I mean, we are proud of what we do. We do value more of a high-touch model with businesses and residents. You want to be proud of what we're offering. And so part of that's not just, you know, the speeds on a different day, but it's how we, how we react in times of trouble. So we, we do feel like we're different, but talk's cheap. You know, we would highly recommend talking to other cities that we serve, you know, weather for Orica. See, see how, how we've done, see if they would say our praises like I think they would. But we're, we're pretty proud of the product that we offer.
And this is actually, the fiber will go inside of the home. You're not going to feed it to a, a box outside somewhere and then run coax or something off of that?
No, typically, we will need to penetrate the structure to get the fiber into a garage where you don't have to have access to a wall jack. That'll be where the gig point is located and will typically run fiber from there to a giga center or even a cable hub. And that's where you would get your actual service plug-in, your, your desktop, and you would have Wi-Fi capabilities from there as well.
Okay.
It's, it's not, to be honest, the, the rollout, it's an expensive product to roll out, but it's not rocket science. It's just, it's just for fiber, really.
Okay. Well, I'm a very aggressive explorer. I'd be glad to be the pilot site for...
I live across the street from you, so you can just catch me while I'm there.
We got to vote on it first.
Any more questions? We'll bring you an agreement if, you don't, do you want the agreement before November 12th? Is it more comfortable then or...
I mean, to be honest, the agreement's really not a point of contention between us. And so you just tell us what the program is and what the percentage is.
Okay.
You know, we'll sign in, we'll put on the bill. Any, you know, there's a, the notion of a right-of-way fee or a franchise agreement that's kind of a legacy notion. And it's usually a percentage tax that's placed on the bill that we will collect from the customer and remit to the city. So if it's 1% or 100%, it really doesn't matter. So we're going to tack it to the bill, collect it each month and remit it every 10 years or however often Steve says we need to remit.
Won't be 10 years.
That could be the new greater fund.
Yeah. Wow, that's a flashback.
Any other questions or discussion?
Sounds good.
So you don't really need anything from us tonight?
No, sir, we're not, not ready to put that agreement out there. What decisions do you see them making other, outside of just the franchise type agreement? I know we're not naming other franchise agreement, but outside of that, what will you be expecting them to decide?
Well, it's just really, my focus is, I've got, we, we have a pretty cookie cutter model. We know the passing, we have a pretty good idea of our penetration rates, the average revenue. We feel like we've got that dialed in. The question is, based on the cost, will it produce a return? And if the cost is excessive, we might have a discussion about is there any way you could help?
Okay.
That, it's, it's really just that simple.
Okay.
But the city, you're going to come back, and part of the agreement is that the city is going to grant Dobson basically a non-exclusive easement so that you can string all this fiber optic all over where you're going to put it as consideration for the agreement. That's, that's the whole, as far as the physical aspect of it, that's what you're going to need to make this happen.
Yeah, so my guess is when it's all said and done, probably 15 to 20% of the plant will be buried. The rest will be on aerial electric poles. That will be really more between us and the electric provider. But where we need to go underground for the 15-ish percent, we'll need to have an agreement from the city that it's okay for us to be in public right of way.
And that's laid within our easements that we've got now?
Correct, correct. And again, we do not put poles underground, that's not what we do.
Any other further discussion?
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yes, sir, certainly.
Do I need to go up there? Can I say something? Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, Mr. President. Good to see you guys tonight. I just wanted to add two or three quick things. One of the biggest initiatives in legislature right now is broadband. That is a big thing for us. We're looking at ARP money right now. And I've been working with people, there's a proposal out there. There's going to be a tremendous amount of money come through the state, which has to be approved by the legislature and endorsed by the governor. And so we're trying to do that. But the one thing that we understand is if we don't have telecommunications capability in our little towns, we don't have a future. And it's that critical. And so in the entire area that I represent, there's no fiber to the home. And the Speaker of the House has fiber to his house in Otoka and, go figure. And Dobson, you know, just agreed to, I think it was May or June, to take fiber to the home through the entire city of Otoka. And I said, well, you know, Otoka, Seminole, pretty similar as far as size and their 69 highway is a little busier than our 99 highway. But I said, we need to do something here. And the economy of scale, you know, the largest location is Seminole. So that's the reason why I wanted Steve and Jim to get together because I think it's critical. I've worked in economic development here for a long time, but I know that if we don't get this done, and we need to get it done now, it, it's just like everything else to really add the benefit to the community, the businesses. And then that housing development is going to go across the street from the school, you know, and all that back in there. We, we need to already have our plan in place and make that a reality. And so I just wanted to tell you that. The other thing I want to mention to you and especially to Steve is that the governor and the legislature has asked communities if they will have special projects, that the ARPA money, we're taking recommendations and they'll be submitted. We have a, a professional valuation group that's been hired by the governor. And all of these applications are going to be qualified, but there are going to be a lot of them, they're going to be funded. So if there is a city issue, like I know the sewer plant is a big issue... So if there is a city issue, like I know the sewer plant is a big issue, uh, you know, I would be happy to help submit that and see if that we could possibly get some, uh, several million dollars in that area too. So there's gonna, eh, there's gonna be a lot of opportunity in the next few months. I just don't want to see us miss out on any of it. I want to thank, uh, Jim Horsberg at Dobson Communications. I've been working with Dobson for over thirty years, not for them, with them, and they've done an excellent job. They also manage and maintain the fiber with a thousand fifty miles ago that OCAN has around the state of Oklahoma that we spent a hundred million dollars on a few years ago. So they have not only the experience, the expertise, the talent and the ability, and they're the only company in Oklahoma right now that's actually pursuing small community like ours to do this fiber to the home. Others want to do it, but they want somebody to pay them to do it, so. Um, anyway, I just wanted to encourage you two. Steve, don't forget, if you want he- help, want me to help with that application on sewer or anything else that you've got, we need to get that done fairly quickly. But also there may be some broadband money, but we don't know how that's gonna all wash out, and I, I would say let's not wait, uh, to see. If we get a benefit down the road, let's take it. But, uh, I, I, I appreciate your leadership. Tim and I go back a long ways. We go a lo- a long way back, Dana. In fact, I think I have a picture of you at the Capitol, right? Yep, she paged for me years ago, so it shows you how low I am and how young she is. And, and.
Mr. Williams, is the case there's someone out there that don't know who you are? Would you state who you are and your name and what you do?
Okay, thank you. I guess, there are people actually watching this?
They might have already turned it off.
Oh, my goodness. I'm not supposed to be public like this. Like, I'm Danny Williams, State Representative from District Twenty-Eight, which includes all of Seminole County, the northern part of Potawatomi County, and then next year I'll have part of the southern part of Potawatomi County because Seminole County's lost population and we had to gate it someplace. And so I'll kind of horseshoe around and, and, uh, but I'll have all of Seminole. And, uh, but, you, of course, I live here, uh, that doesn't make me prejudiced, but opinionated.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Fast your bedtime, Dan.
Okay. Now, how long has Dobson been in business?
Since nineteen thirty-six.
Thirty-six. For, also for people who aren't aware, uh, Oklahoma has a tremendous history in telecommunications. Dobson is one of those, is a very early group that got in, it's family, it's family owned, right? They got into the business back in the thirties and so.
I would recommend that we table this matter, come back with a agreement rather than take no action.
Or take no action, whichever one you want to do.
I'd, I'd probably rather table it than to take no action.
Motion to table, Dan. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is an aye vote. Ayes.
All in favor.
In favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Ayes have it, motion carries. Now, let's see. We have, um, a, an addendum of number eight. Has to do with consideration and possible action to approve a date and/or time for trick-or-treat night within the city of Seminole.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on that?
Yeah, we, we need to determine a, a day of the week that you want to designate as trick-or-treat. Uh, there's been a suggestion made that we do it on Thursday evening as a tourism, uh, type deal. It'd be bringing a lot of people from Ada and Shawnee and.
Well, I'd make a motion to that effect because Friday, aren't we having?
Are you joking, Thursday?
What are you talking about, Thursday?
Thursday.
Halloween's on Sunday.
Well, Halloween's on Sunday, so we can't do it on Sunday.
The feedback I've got is to suggest it's Saturday, do it, just doing it Saturday. He's giving us a hard time because he wants us to ha- be slammed by all these trick-or-treaters from out of town. The feedback I got is Saturday, the thirtieth, and I would suggest time-wise, it was that way when I was little, six to nine, but that's, of course, you know, subject to everybody else's opinion.
We're having, we're having trunk-or-treat. Didn't we pass that last time downtown on Friday?
It's Friday. Friday's trunk-or-treat.
Sunday is out, Saturday is, no, Wednesday's my birthday, so we can't do it on Wednesday.
Why is Sunday off?
Oh, oh, it just, I don't think people want to do trick-or-treating on Sunday, but I just don't think that that would.
Why do you think that?
Because it's, uh, Sunday is a day that's mostly devoted to, uh, Christian meetings and congregations and celebrations. Typically, Halloween is seen as a celebration of the dark side historically.
But that's not what it originally was.
That's not what it is, yeah.
Oh, well, I know that's not what it is, I'm just saying.
It's for kids to go get candy. I, you know, that's.
Well, typically it was celebrating the day, November first, which is All Souls Day, and, uh, that's where it originally came from, is people got together and celebrated, you know, people that passed away. But anyway, that's not what it is anymore. As far as the trick-or-treat, that has nothing to do with the real celebration, it's just become that, but anyway, but people, we've, we've always tended to avoid doing it on Friday nights and Sunday nights because, well, Fridays is, especially if there's a football game in town because of our resources, you know, that may need to be, be dealing with that as far as, you know, emergency services and, and people walking, and then just Sundays just, yeah, it's pretty much because it's.
So I, I can give a, a second for my motion to do it on Thursday.
Thank you for that.
Well, the terrible entertaining motion for.
Any day.
When do we, uh, celebrate trick-or-treat in Seminole? Whatever you want to say.
I kinda made it. I guess I didn't really say it was a motion, but mine was a motion for Saturday night from six to nine.
So motion's been made and seconded for Saturday night for trick-or-treat night in the city of Seminole. All those.
Saturday, October thirty, right?
Thirty.
Okay.
Thirtieth.
Is there a time?
Yeah, we need a time.
Dark.
Six to nine. I said that in my motion, I don't know if y'all heard of it, that was part of our.
Six to nine.
That's the way it was when I was little in Seminole, it was always six to nine, so I just assumed. Y'all can change that, I don't care. I mean, my kids are kind of beyond it. Anyway, we just get slammed at our house every year, but.
So the, the motion has been made to have it on ten-thirty, that would be Saturday night from six to nine. Go ahead, second.
He already seconded it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? So the ayes have it. Now we're on to whatever each of us wants to talk about, right? I don't hold luck to anything, I don't, okay.
I think we're good.
All right, so it goes to, uh, Mayor's not here, it's Ward One. Last time I was told I have to do this in order, so. I'm really, really thrilled that Seminole is gonna have an Indigenous People's Day. My mother would be thrilled. Most of the relatives on her side of the family would be. I also want to bring up something that, um, Indigenous people, we all know, have historically, I mean, at one time, the federal government offered a bounty. I hunted Indigenous people like game animals, and you could turn in a scalp and get money for it. I don't just, uh, it's not quite like that for the mentally ill, but it's been really difficult for the mentally ill to ever get a fair shake with anything, mostly because I guess they don't vote and don't have a, um, group, organization of any kind that, causes them or helps them vote. And it's not just other places that things like this happen. There was a person who was purportedly mentally ill or in a mental distress situation. That was, this was reported in Tuesday, May eighth, twenty eighteen, and the Seminole producer, uh, I guess he had an altercation, was being chased by the highway patrol, and the, uh, county sheriff got involved and our police got involved in it, and his car ran into a ditch south of town. He got out of the car, walked to the back of the car after a little standoff and pulled out a long item, but was said to, at the time, thought to have been a rifle. Never was confirmed that I know of, but what was confirmed was that when they cleaned up the site after he was shot by the police onsite, there were ninety shell casings retrieved from the scene. Now, that would not happen if I had been pulled over half in a ditch and got out and got my umbrella. Ninety people, ninety shots to kill a mentally ill person? This is not an unusual thing. I just want to throw that out for food for thought. Uh, we've reached a point where we're turning the corner with Indigenous people in the United States. I think it's time that we can start turning the corner with the mentally ill in the United States. Dana?
Um, okay. So, uh, okay. So, welcome to Ward One, uh, everyone. And Representative Williams, welcome to Ward One, so good to see you again.
Thank you.
Um, thank you for being here today. Um, I also want to say meadow, uh, a big meadow, that's thank you in our, uh, Seminole language to Mayor Griffin and for the entire city leadership, for the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation. Um, only good things can happen when acknowledgement occurs, and, um, I'm just, I'm super appreciative of it. Um, I was on a radio show this morning with Seminole Nation Radio, and there was just a lot of excitement about it. Um, I know I didn't get a lot of fanfare when we, when Larry read it, but, uh, there is some excitement, uh, in the community about it, so I think it's a very positive, um, uh, gesture, and I just want to say meadow, uh, to Mayor Griffin for that, it's, it's pretty amazing. Um, just a couple, a couple things that we've been, uh, working on in Ward One. Um, I got a constituent issue that was brought up to me and I worked with, uh, Steve on it, and I want to thank Steve for, um, addressing it pretty quickly. There was a, a structure, I guess you could call it a home, I guess it's just a structure now, it looks pretty, pretty dilapidated, um, but there was a lot of, uh, just, you know, trash and debris next to the Ebenezer Baptist Church, and, uh, those folks had, uh, some concerns about that, and then, um, it was cleaned up the next day, I think. So, um, that was great. Um, I noticed that there are some trash cans put up in Chase Park. That's amazing, so thank you, that's great. Um, and then, um, I just want to also acknowledge the, uh, the youth council. So I have a Ward One, uh, kiddo, happens to be my kiddo, uh, on the council, and, um, it's just amazing, you know, he came back and was telling me that the, uh, presentation they had was about, uh, volunteering and how important it is to, um, uh, be part of the solution in the city instead of just, you know, always being the one to bring a problem. And so, um, that's great that they got to hear that, um, and that this youth council is even a thing in the city. I think it's amazing. So, um, kudos to you all for, uh, for making that happen. And then the, uh, speaking of Halloween, um, the Seminole Arts Council has quite a few, uh, events going on, uh, for that, uh, for that holiday or celebration or whatever we want to call it. There is also a, um, which kind of really excited at first about a, um, competition, a yard decoration competition that we're gonna, um, uh, kick off for Halloween and fall, so it's Halloween slash fall de- uh, decorations, just to get people in the festive mood. And, uh, right when we were just about to kick it off, we got some reports that people were stealing Halloween decorations already. Um, not, well, one was in my ward, actually, from my neighbor, so, um, just, you know, I know the pla- I don't know if the police department, if that was, there was, they recalled, but on social media, there's been a couple of folks who have had some really big and expensive and playful stolen, and, um, it's just kind of unfortunate, um, given that these folks, you know, are using their own money, their own time to make the town a little bit more festive, and so just wanted to make you all, um, aware of that. And I believe that's all. I just want to offer, um, my public, I've already done it privately, but my public condolence to our friend Cory Crabtree, lost his mother, uh, this past weekend.
Amen.
That's all I have, thank you.
Ward Two, Mr. Kramer.
I don't have anything, just thank you guys for, it was encouraging things.
Ward Three, Mr. Papel.
Yes, Danny, thank bringing Dobson in and showing us, kind of opened our eyes to what's possibility that was already here, kind of underneath the clouds, and thank you for bringing it on and representing us in Seminole. Thank you. That's all I have, thank you.
Ward Four, Mr. Anson.
I'd like to thank you guys also, and everything else has pretty much already been said, so.
City Attorney? City Manager?
John, did you get a chance?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Yes, sir, I'm gonna dovetail off the security issue and, and some of the things that are being stolen off of porches, et cetera. Representative Williams, I've asked Omag and Brad and I kind of talked about it a little bit in, in years past. We, we allow, our society and, and the law, I believe, allows for firefighters to go in someone's home and, and install a smoke detector. It stands to reason that we could, in, in certain circumstances, be allowed to install security cameras. Uh, and I don't know what format that takes, I'm not gonna put it on the fire department or the police department, I don't know what it looks like, but it makes sense that we would be allowed to enter a private area and install a security camera because technology has caught up now. We can do that, it's wireless, we're not drilling holes, we can do that, especially when we get fiber to the home, okay? So I would encourage you to think about that, maybe put something in the works, uh, at some point. I know January, February's the time to be throwing things in there and ideas. I think that's one that probably had, the time has come for us to consider. And I think that in, in a lot of cases, uh, we can solve a lot of issues real quick if, if we had the ability to identify the thieves and, okay? I'm, I'm gonna echo Cory Crabtree, uh, man, just bless his family and, and, uh, just want to pray over them, it's just a hard, hard time when you lose your mother. One thing that, that Jack mentioned, and there was a little bit of discussion about the Seminole producer, and I, I think I probably need to clarify that the Seminole Economic Development Council has no operational control over what's going on with the Seminole producer. They, they, it's not a, it's, there's not intervention there, it's just, hey, let's try to keep the doors open so that there's a watchdog. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank Jack Senior. I want to encourage everyone, get out to Thursday, Thursday night at seven PM, undefeated, Seminole Chieftains are gonna play, uh, undefeated, ranked number one or two, Lincoln Christian. Game time is at seven o'clock, everybody come out and support them. If you have loved ones that live in the Strather area, uh, pray for them because, uh, we're days away now from them not having an ambulance service. And, uh, we, there is no, eh, eh, as far as I can tell, Chief hasn't come to me with any solutions, uh, that are going to be provided or even advanced. We don't know. We don't know. Obviously, if we get a call and, uh, I can't imagine how this would, would come about, but it's gonna be, uh, those folks up there are gonna be sitting a long time waiting on an ambulance because, uh, it's not being provided. because it's not being provided as of November 1st. So watch out for them. If you know anybody up there, give them a heads up. Lastly, I don't usually, especially from this, this position, talk about rumors out there, but I, in this case, I think it's appropriate. I just want to let all the kids out there know that the rumor is that East Gate area and Twin Lakes are going to be given full-size candy bars.
That is definitely a rumor.
I heard about that too.
Handfuls.
You heard that? Okay.
On Sunday.
Okay. I think that concludes everyone that's present. I'll tell you, here, entertaining a motion for a German.
Motion to German, anybody?
Yes, I'll do that.
Second, third.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Ayes have it.